All right, we are closing in on seven o'clock. I'm sure that we get everyone's video and audio up.
Mayor, I'm waiting on our speaker to Sunny, and I haven't seen her yet, Kara Townsend.
Do we have a cell phone for Beverly?
I do. I'm trying to connect with her now.
All right. Are we waiting on anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's okay if she does join in later, we'll notify you and we can join her at some other point during the meeting if she calls in.
Sounds good. All right. And just a reminder that after we do a quick introduction, we're going to do the verbal roll call. So make sure to unmute yourself, let it pause for just a second, and then verbally speak. All right. We'll go ahead and officially gavel in. So welcome everyone to tonight's meeting in the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. I'd like to welcome everyone. Due to coronavirus and the pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform as posted on the City of Burlington's website. This meeting is also streaming live on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/cobnc. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440. And I'll repeat that number again when we get to the public comment and the public hearing sessions of the meeting. So if you are having technical difficulties, John is standing by to assist with those. For tonight's public comments, attendees who wish to address the council, please indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature within Zoom. Or if joining us by phone, press star nine, and you will be called on to speak during that time appropriate in the meeting. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
And presenters and staff, when I call your name, please answer in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
There we go. Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant city manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Police chief Jeff Smythe.
Here.
Community development administrator Sonya Randolph.
Here.
Economic development director Peter Bishop.
Here.
There we go. All right. For tonight's invocation, we come on council member Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Lord, as we gather tonight in our own respective locations, it reminds me that we are individuals, we behave as individuals, yet we come together for a purpose. As our country is rebounding from the effects of COVID-19, we find ourselves in the middle of turmoil and chaos in many places. Many have lost jobs, and many are concerned and worried. Businesses are trying to reopen, and some have lost loved ones. Others are victims of crime or criminal activities, and in some small way or large way, we all are suffering. Please help us to maintain our individual perspectives, but to come together for a purpose as a nation. Through your word, we will find our purpose. Through your word, we will find peace and solace. Through faith, we find opportunity and our pathway. Through belief, we find resolution. In Proverbs, you state that the name of the Lord is a strong tower, the righteous run to it and are safe. I ask that this evening you bless our country and you bring it out of despair. I ask that you heal those who have lost loved ones. I ask that you give hope to those that have lost jobs or businesses. In your name, anything is possible, and we're claiming that promise tonight, Lord. Please keep our city and our citizens safe from harm's way. Keep us mindful as a council of our duties and our responsibilities. All these things we ask in your name, which is our strong tower. Amen.
Amen. Do we have Kara Townsend on the line yet? Okay. All right. We are going to skip over the special report from Kara Townsend, who's our partnership specialist assist with the U.S. Census Bureau. And we will come back to that when we get her on the line. So that moves next to our recognition of interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Thank you. Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Done.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hikes.
I would like to recuse myself from new business item number three, please.
The new business item number three. You're going to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Hikes?
You're asking for a motion, Mayor?
A motion to recuse Mayor Pro Tem.
I make a motion to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Hikes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Hikes from new business item number three made by councilmember Ward, seconded by councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Mayor Pro Tem Hikes will be recused from item three of business. All right. Next is additions to the consent agenda. We have item B, traffic commission recommendation for Front Street and Main Street. Item C, annexation request 1315 Elrato Street, and item D, annexation request for 3659 Maple Avenue. Do I hear a motion to approve these additions?
Moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from councilmember Owen, seconded by councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved by councilmember, by myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I, with the additions, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Motion to adopt with additions is made by councilmember Ward and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed? Motion is approved unanimously by myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have a staff report on city initiatives to support Phase Two business reopening. At this time, we'll recognize Peter Bishop, our economic development director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good evening to you again tonight. I am going to share with you a staff report, an update to the outdoor dining procedures that you asked staff to look closer into and develop some options for your review. So without further ado, I'm going to share my screen and a presentation. So I'm awaiting for the host to allow this to happen. And there we go. And hopefully, we are sharing my screen.
Like we got you up.
Excellent. So this is our follow-up report for outdoor dining. We've had several meetings, collaborative staff meetings as a group here in City Hall with multiple departments, talking about the issue at different levels and ways that we could be flexible and use tools that we have at the City of Burlington's disposal. We've had nine formal meetings and a lot of more informal meetings since then, again, with different levels of staff. And certainly want to thank all those staff members and multiple departments really put a lot of effort into examining what was available for our businesses to help them get open and add some capacity to their seating. We did a lot of one-on-one meetings with our downtown restaurants and eateries and have done many one-on-one meetings and visits with suburban restaurants and restaurants along our main corridors on private properties and in shopping centers. And we've really tried to focus on three principles in expanding outdoor dining options to make it as simple as possible for the folks administering the program and those applying to be as flexible as possible with some of our rules and regulations that we have with the city. But to do all these things in the encapsulation and the understanding of safety and the importance of safety, both within COVID and for putting dining areas in some places where they may not have been before. If you recall, our last discussion on this item prior to the work session yesterday was before Phase Two was even entered into at the state level. So Governor Cooper, after our discussion on the 19th, actually pushed the state into Phase Two of the reopening, which created some new capacity restrictions for restaurants. So restaurants were allowed to open, but only at 50% of their indoor capacity. As we explored further the governor's order, we discovered through some of our departments and our fire department that outdoor capacity could be used to get back to 100% for restaurants. So we wanted to find ways that we could help restaurants add seats and get back to that 100 capacity so that they could make enough money to be open and be profitable the way that they were pre-COVID. And then one thing also that we were expecting possibly to have gyms and fitness studios open in Phase Two, and that did not happen. Interestingly, parks and outdoor spaces in the City of Burlington, our trails were left open the entire time during some of our stay-at-home orders and even further into. And we saw that there was a lot of utilization of our recreation spaces. Anybody who's been to City Park or Joel Davidson Springwood or Guilford McIntosh can attest to how popular those parks have been for folks. So we've been really been seeing some outdoor recreation opportunities popping up. As part of the Phase Two guidance, the State Department of Health and Human Services partnered with the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association to come up with the Count on Me NC campaign. And this has been really good guidance for restaurants and for the owners of the restaurants and also for customers to understand what they should expect restaurants to be doing from a cleanliness and a sanitation standpoint, but also what they can do to protect themselves and other customers and restaurants. Businesses are able to register. This is a voluntary pledge, but it's something that is branded and that folks are really putting out the awareness to so that customers and businesses can have a common language on what to expect post-COVID in their restaurants. We've already had 10 businesses in the few days that this Count on Me NC has been up registered. A couple of them that you know very well, Burlington Beer Works and Zaxx are registered for that. So a great guidance there on countonmeandc.org to give even more sanitary guidelines for customers and our restaurant businesses. So the result of our work in examining the stay-at-home orders and what was, and the Phase Two reopening, we looked at different options that the city had, and really our staff identified existing permits that with some small modifications could be adjusted to allow dining to continue occurring outdoors. So that's what we did. Our staff, specifically our planning and community development staff, went through our outdoor dining permit, which covers public spaces, and added some language to make it temporary for COVID purposes. And they did the same with our temporary use permits, which covers private property. And that permit would allow you to expand dining into parking areas with the agreement of the property owner and your neighbors. And then I referenced outdoor recreation. Last year, Emily Crowley, who you'll hear from later tonight in our B-Town Events and Recreation Division, Recreation and Parks, worked with Downtown Yoga on Berry to use our outdoor green space for yoga events here on our public green. And that turned into an idea to possibly offer outdoor recreation opportunities for businesses and fitness studios and gyms who were not yet able to open to use some of our public spaces for their classes. So this has actually been a very popular permit that has been issued, this outdoor fitness use permit. And it allows folks to use public green space that is not a recreational field at a city property for outdoor recreation use. According to Emily, we've had 30 classes already take advantage of this permit. And there are three actively using it and four in discussions to complete a new permit. So we're really excited about the utilization of that permit and seeing folks active on our spaces. So all of this work of staff doesn't happen without good communication. So we can have good ideas and think that we're trying to help folks, but if we're not communicating this well, then it's not really getting to the folks that it can possibly help. So we really did a comprehensive communications plan and developed a team of folks to communicate first with our municipal service district and the downtown area. Because we have a lot of public space there, we wanted to be sure that all the businesses and eateries downtown knew exactly what their options were, where they could put outdoor dining on public space, and what the expectations were of the city for what would happen on that space. We've also gone out into the community on private properties and with shopping centers and have been passing out this information for those folks to see about putting chairs and tables and other areas into parking lots outside of downtown. Now, it's important the way that we did this, we didn't want to have very long telephone conversations with businesses. We didn't want to surprise them with anything. I think it was important for us to talk to the people first. So the first thing that we wanted to do is check in with them and see how they were doing, how their families were doing. Then we started asking them about their businesses and how these tools could possibly help get their business back on their feet. We delivered all the possible relevant permits to them so they could fill them out or ask us any questions. And we also informed them of their feedback opportunities for city council meetings yesterday and then again tonight. After we did some of the one-on-one communications, we have an excellent community engagement and public information staff. John Vernon and Morgan Lassiter wrote a great press release that we shared throughout the community and throughout our media partners. And that in turn turned into some really good traction and stories from WFMY, who interviewed Downtown Yoga and Bar and myself. Spectrum News did some interviews, as did Fox Eight. We also got some really good traction on Facebook with some postings that John put up. And then Twitter, which lately has been my favorite social media tool, getting a lot of good following and resharing of some of our interests that we've had there. So I'm proud of the communications work that we did and a lot of great support from our community engagement and public information team. And then finally, this is, so we've done the feedback, we've gotten some good communication with our business owners, and they are applying. I've mentioned the outdoor fitness ones are really taking the lead and jumping on this, pun not intended. But we have seen uses at our parks. Some of our downtown businesses are looking to expand their alfresco dining onto sidewalks and other areas. And we're continuing that outreach and communication with our businesses throughout the city. So we feel good about the options that staff has been able to develop on a very quick basis and turnaround. We feel like we've communicated them widely, and we're going to continue communicating them. And our real hope, you know, is that the businesses utilize these tools and that we can get our restaurants back up to capacity and get those folks whole again and enjoying their business lives. That concludes my presentation. I'll answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from council?
Peter, did anything come up throughout your communications by area restaurants that we could not accommodate? Was there anything that you heard on an ongoing basis, maybe for multiple times, that we just could not accommodate?
Well, there is a bill at the state level regarding ABC permits and flexibility on ABC permitting. That was one thing that we heard early on. If the city was looking to potentially expand dining, that folks who were serving alcohol or needed ABC permit expansions, that that would be an issue they'd want to deal with as well. Some folks expressed some concern about the size of their space and being able to get enough outdoor seating and, you know, going through the scenario, if it would be worth it or not to obtain outdoor furniture, possibly put up a tent and train employees on using that new space. So it doesn't come without challenges or, you know, problem solving that business owners would need to do to unlock some of this capacity. Those were some of the main feedback points that I heard.
Okay, thank you.
Other council questions? All right. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I've been informed that Kara Townsend has joined us. So we will return to, we'll call her forward at this time and unmute her. Again, she's our partnership specialist from the U.S. Census Bureau. So welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, council members and mayor. I'm happy to be a part of your meeting tonight.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you for being here.
Yes. Well, I just wanted to give you all an update on the census and let you know that we are in full swing in the census. We are starting our door-to-door efforts, of course, wearing masks and being very cautious to protect us and those around us. But I just wanted to encourage everyone to still fill out their census. And you can do that online, you can do that on your phone. But we're really, really pushing this year because North Carolina has a chance to get one or two new congressional seats. And the sad thing is that we missed one of those by only about 2,000 counts last census 10 years ago. So we don't want to miss it again. And even though Charlotte and Raleigh are fighting for those seats, as, you know, as a triad, we have more people. And so we have a chance at getting that. But, you know, the census not only controls our congressional reportionment, but also all of our federal funding, as you all are well aware. But North Carolina receives about $18 billion from the federal government. And of course, that includes everything from healthcare to education to roads, programs that people really need, like Meals on Wheels. And there are usually waiting lists for that. So we're encouraging people to get out there and fill out their census. And I also wanted to let people know that there is a lot of fraud. This is the first time the census is electronic. And so people will not be asking for a PIN number or your social security number. Just make sure, you know, if anyone comes to your door, they should be very identifiable. So they'll have a bag, they'll have a laptop, they'll have a census badge. So just be looking for that if anyone comes to the door. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Excellent. Any questions from council members?
Yeah, what is the timeline? I mean, when does this effort end?
So we've extended it. Self-response will go through the end of October. It ends on October 31st.
So as of now, what, you might not have this, answer this question. So as of now, what percentage of people have responded? I read throughout the state, and particularly here in this county.
Alamance County is doing very well. It just hit 60% not too long ago. And I believe Alamance was about 72% in the last census. So it's doing very well. And I must give accolades to your county because I deal with a lot of counties in the triad. And Alamance has been very aggressive from the county complete count committee. Marlena Isley has really been working hard on that. And also Commissioner Gailey has been interested in pushing that. So I just, I really appreciate how everyone has worked together, how the government has worked with the business, you know, groups. It's really been impressive.
Other questions from council?
I have a quick question, Mayor. When will the official census be ready or published? Sometime in 2021, or do you know at this point?
I will, in 2021, it should be published. Yes, the date might be a little bit later than we had anticipated. I believe I saw April of 2021. But I know we still have a deadline to get some of the numbers to the president by the end of this year.
Okay, but typically it would be April of the following year, like April of 2021. Okay, that's good. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
We've talked a lot with our citizens about the importance of the cards they got in the mail and the number on there as far as completing their census. Has anything about the self-reporting process changed? Or do you have any direction if somebody may have misplaced that card and doesn't have their?
Yes, they do not need their card to respond. So you don't, you actually don't even need an address to respond. Just your name and the city you live in is fine. You can go online at my2020census.gov and fill it out. And I'm happy to provide a phone number as well. But those are the two best ways, I think, to respond to the census. And I also want to point out that there are a lot of people who don't speak English, and we have all kinds of different languages on our website that can assist with that because we really want to know who's here. So I'm happy to provide that. Let me get the phone number for you.
It's, I think, very important. One of the things we talked about in our complete count committee is the fact that I think there's over 50 different languages spoken by students in ABSS, which is a great way that they track all the languages in our county. So multilingual tools are always very important.
It's very important, yes. And I just encourage people to be very specific on their background. In parts of Guilford County, we have the largest Montan Yard population outside, in the world, outside of Vietnam. And so that's a group that we haven't really counted all of those people. So we're encouraging them to respond and be very specific. But the phone number, I'll give you all the phone number. So it's 1-844-330-2020. And then again, the website is my2020census.gov. And it should only take about 10 minutes to respond to. It's also a fun project to do with your kids. And it should only take about 10 minutes to to respond to. It's also a fun, a fun project to do with your kids. How can fill it out? My seven-year-old just love that.
Again, other questions from council?
Are we are we utilizing, and I don't know if Rachel's on the line or not. Are we utilizing any of our public information efforts in terms of literature we produce to and to encourage people to take advantage of of the census issue, census situation this year?
Yeah, yes. Oh, as far as I know, there have been a lot of a lot of mailings that have gone out in in Alamance County. I know Linda Jones is is working for the Chamber of Commerce. She her job is is specific to the census. So she has told me about 14,000 to 20,000 mailings that have gone out and she could expand on that if y'all have questions and I can give you her email address.
Rachel, do you want to comment on things the city's done?
I can speak on behalf of Morgan and John and the efforts that they've put in. I know there have been several videos that they've produced for the local government channel and the YouTube channel. The census has been mentioned in our direct mail city works that goes to all of our Waterville customers several times now, I believe it was the headline in the last edition. There's a website that's dedicated to census promotion in Burlington. I know it's on all of our email signatures here at the city. Emily Crowley's been doing great work at some food distribution events that have been happening weekly, handing out personally handing out census information. So that's been a concerted effort among the community engagement staff to get the census word out in Burlington.
Thank you.
Other council questions?
I'm just curious, Kara, how do you know how what the percentage of people is that have responded since we're trying to do a count? How do you know that it's that?
We do a tracker. So we do meetings every once a week and we go over all the percentages and kind of track on how the counties are doing and when we get to certain thresholds. Because North Carolina is not, we're kind of behind the national average. So we're really trying to push. I'm part of the southern region, so we have several states, you know, we track each other. But as a state, as a state, we're doing well in the southern region, but nationally we need to, we need to work a little bit harder. So I'm happy to provide a link to show you kind of, you know, how we track everything to make it easier to break down.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? I'll share the form was very easy to use and as foster parents, we even were able to record our foster children. So it it works for all different family structures and so y'all have done a great job putting it together.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We'll return to our normal agenda. Make sure to include the information about the phone number and mycensus2020.gov website as we continue to go forward. So obviously, it's incredibly important to make sure that we're able to get the funding we need and planning that we constantly have to do it here in the city. All right. Make sure I don't miss anything. All right, so next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about these items, please let us know. Item A to adopt a community development housing organization, CHODO Audit Policy and Procedure. Item B to adopt an ordinance to approve the following traffic commission recommendation. Number one, to request the installation of an all-way stop sign condition at the intersection of Front and Main Street. And item two, to request the installation of two additional two-hour parking spaces. Add two to our two parking spaces to the northwest quadrant of Main Street and Front Street. On Front Street, 15 feet from Main Street to a point 55 feet from the same. Item C to defer the public hearing in consideration of applications. Applicants petition for annexation for the 1315 Elrato Street property to a future time pursuant to NCGS 160A-58 Burlington City Code 4040 and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant and the city filed in the Alamance County Register of Deeds. Item D to defer public hearing and consideration of the applicant's petition for annexation for 3659 Maple Avenue property to a future time pursuant to NCGS 168-58 Burlington City Code 4040 and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant and the city filed in the Alman County Register of Deeds. Do I hear a motion? And second, to apply approve the foregoing consent agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous, including myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Butler, Ward, and Owen. Next on our agenda, we have unfinished business. Item one, the council will consider approving a grant-funded youth diverting coordinator position level 19 and approve budget amendment 2020-30 to establish the NC Governor's Crime Commission Deflection and Diversion Program, known as YDDP Project Ordinance. This was tabled from our May 19th, 2020 city council meeting. This time I'd like to recognize Police Chief Jeff Smythe. Welcome.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me back tonight. With your permission, I think I've got a brief PowerPoint to post up. They'll just guide through some brief conversation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, let's bring that up.
Just as a as a matter of introduction, you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, the next slide is a matter of introduction to the to the concept. Again, it's a Governor's Crime Commission grant. It's for about $200,000 each year. Some of the documentation talks about a match, but that's been resolved. There's no match required to the city. There's no cost us for the entirety of the grant. And then we'll talk at the end, maybe a little bit about what happens at the end of the two years. On the on the next slide, we've got active partners and then service delivery partners. So the operation grant partners for us are listed here, ABSS, Juvenile Justice, RHA Health Services that we already partner with in some respect, and this is going to add to that partnership. And then the Alamance Racial Equity Alliance, who they conduct the REI classes, Racial Equity Institute classes. We've had 30 police officers already graduate from that program and they're going to ramp up their offerings and our intent is to include all of the line staff from the partners that you see on the screen. Those folks will attend the the two-day REI class. That's the intent of one piece of this grant. On the next slide, we've got the service provider partners. So DSS, Crossroads, Club, Teen Court, Boys and Girls Club, all of those have service delivery programs that we seek to partner with and work with. Send teens to graduate them out of those programs and then hopefully prevent recidivism in those youths. That's the that's the goal of the program. So the the grant speak, right, is as you see on the slide here, to disrupt the cycle of juvenile justice. I've kind of taken the liberty to translate that into English on the next slide. So basically what we're saying is when youths get in trouble, if the police get called, our goal is to work with the the counselor that that we'll employ based on this grant and the the mental health provider to kind of do wraparound services to evaluate the family environment, what's going on at school, any other factors and create a plan that would keep this child from being having future police contact. That's the goal of this. And all of this takes place in the space of Raise the Age, right? Recently, North Carolina changed where 16 and 17-year-olds are no longer adults. They're they're youth in the justice system. And so there's this different pool of of young people that we want to support and help direct them towards a crime-free life in the future. And if we can interdict at the very first police contact, that's the most effective. So that's what this grant is focused at doing.
Hey, Chief?
Yes.
Can can you identify what trouble means here? When a when a youth gets in trouble, what is trouble?
Yeah, so it's the most common scenario is some kind of disciplinary action at school that would constitute a crime. So that might be an affray, a lunchroom fight. It might be threats. It might be a larceny, stealing a cellphone from another youth, any of those things that that happen regularly in the schools. You know, 20 years ago, when those things happened, right, they'd call the parents and the parents would take care of things. But now in a litigious society, we find that the police are often called to matters that probably don't really need to be criminalized. You know, there's some, a kid brings a knife or a gun to school. That's not what we're talking about here, right? Those are felonies and the law is very specific with how felonies migrate up into adult court. We're talking about low-level, nonviolent misdemeanor offenses. We're also talking about a shoplifting at Target, those kinds of things. Malicious damage in a neighborhood, kids that break pumpkins on Halloween, that kind of stuff, very low-level offenses, sir.
Drugs, would would drugs fit into that category in any capacity?
Yeah, there's probably some small misdemeanor possession of marijuana and paraphernalia that would be in here. And there's some very specific models for treatment of youth that are engaged in that drug activity. And often what we see with drug and alcohol activity with children is that they're acting out due to other circumstances. And that's why we feel like this grant with the wraparound services using the counselor and family environment assessment. We're able to change what's going on at home and fix that circumstance. And then they don't feel the need to engage in substance abuse anymore. So yeah, that certainly is a component of what would be going on here.
And is that, and if it was repetitive, would we use the same activity each time?
No, no, sir. So it's it's situational and generally on repetitive offenses, they're going to move right straight into the youth system with the court counselors and they're going to proceed with prosecution and then other avenues through the criminal justice system. These are for generally one time, one time and out is the goal. Or, you know, it was a shoplifting this time and then a year later it's drinking a beer underage. So those are pretty different things. We might still have those in the program, but the the minute it's the same offense over and over, they automatically are referred into the justice system.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, it was a great question. I appreciate it getting clarity right right now. So thank you. So the the next slide, I think, just covers some of the goals of the of the program. Four main buckets of activity for us. We really want to create these new support systems for diversion. As we do that, we feel like we have to inventory everything that's available right up front right now. So that's a piece of that. And then the REI training that I already spoke about. And then lastly, the kind of tangible, trackable goal is to reduce the number of arrests and then increase the referrals to the service agencies that are giving treatment and not bringing the youth into the judicial system. That's that's the goal of the program. Some of the justification for this, we obtained a grant from a different organization about two years ago now. And they asked for some data, which we had never sought out. And we went and found the data based on minority contacts. That's the the two-year ago term. We've morphed into talking about racial and ethnic disparities at this point, but the grant still says DMC stuff. So there's a little bit of flip-flop there, but for tonight, let's just use racial and ethnic disparity. So that data tells us that in the Burlington School System, 23% of the kids are African-American. And then the petition data says that 83% of the kids that are petitioned into the judicial system, they're African-American. So it's about a three times disproportionate ratio. And that's due to implicit bias and systemic racism. And and a piece of this grant really is about informing all the participants in the system about those things. That's the REI training. And then seeking to have different outcomes that reduce the racial and ethnic disparities in in the data sets. And I don't want to call it data, right? Because these are the the lives of youth. And so we want to do it better. And we feel like this grant gives us a a great place to start from, to understand the issues and then have better outcomes for these these children.
But it would still, it it the the program would still be for all youth?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. Regardless of where they go to school, it's it's for everyone. And yeah, we want to have the best outcomes for everybody. And then this is all, as I said, in the framework of Raise the Age, which took place in 2019. So everybody's just trying to get used to that. And that's going to be an impact for us. And then the the last bullet point, of course, is that it's zero cost us during this two-year period. And then at the end of the two years, we feel like we'll be looking for the other existing partners to take a more active role. And we hope to take a complete step back from this and let those other systems then operate based on the information that they've obtained through the classes and through the program management that's been going on for the 24-month period. That's the goal. Just our last slide really is just highlighting our commitment to youth in Burlington. We've got so many programs in recreation and parks. You all know our police department kind of shining star is the Junior Police Academy. We've had that for about 25 years. But that, you know, is only able to reach about 25 youth each year. And so there's certainly many more young people that come into contact that we want to address. So some of these other things that are available are Fire and Police Explorers. Those are programs under the Boy Scouts. Youth Solutions and Bark and Play are all city-sponsored things that we work together and collaborate diligently on. And then, of course, the Burlington Police Department is still very committed to DARE instruction, drug abuse resistance education. That program is evidence-based now and highly respected. And we teach it to every every young person in the city in fifth grade and seventh grade. That's in public schools as well as private schools. We cover all of them. So we're very committed to that and seems to be very successful overall. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Chief, I have one question. I'm looking over into the materials and looking at, you know, the, yeah, I guess one way you determine the effectiveness is is to look at the arrest numbers for juveniles. And if figure was set at 5%, reducing from 472 to 448, I was just curious as to how that 5% figure was arrived at. Was that some kind of standard? If you achieve that, that that means the program is effective?
No, sir. That was in in concert with the recommendation of our grant writer. And I'll tell you, that's not at all a stretch goal. So I expect that we will eclipse that, you know, by two or three or four times. We really expect to have dramatic results, but we also didn't feel like we could commit to that in writing in the grant. So we had a very reasonable kind of low bar set for that, but our our private expectations are vastly higher than that.
Okay, well, I was curious because my own personal thought was that 5% was a little low. You know, for some measurement of effectiveness. So having said that, I understand. Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. I I agree with you. 5% is very low and and we're really going to shoot shoot for the moon and try to do much better than that.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from council?
So the 472 arrests that we're at now. Obviously, that's our, that's our starting point. Is that all races? Is that just DMC correlated? I mean, what is what is that 470?
That's all youth involved in petitions into the system.
And if we went back to 2018, 2017, has there been a trend already? Do we know what that would look like?
Yeah, my sense is that it's relatively flat, sir, over the last few years. It's been creeping up a bit. We see some modification. I think the biggest movement is in the Hispanic sector. It's very low. So in Burlington School System, 25% of that youth population is Hispanic. 3% in the data set have been petitioned. And when we crafted the the grant, the data we were looking at was two years old. And I think more recently that Hispanic number has crept up some, but that's about the only change that I can speak to without drilling back into all those numbers.
And the reason I ask that, if you if you go back and look at at our arrest counts five years ago. They've come down tremendously. Where where it was in the 4,400s, where I I think I got that from the one of the studies that you guys put out. Now we're 26, 2,800, somewhere in there. So I would think those would be coming down as well, which means there must be something working already.
I think the data is different, sir, for the youth. The adult numbers are definitely coming down. I think the juvenile numbers are the reverse. They're going up over time gradually.
Okay.
I'll verify that and and let you know through subsequent communication, but that's my sense.
Yeah, that's that's more of a curiosity more than anything, just trying to be sure you I'm I'm understanding the a true a true trend. You know, I'll be honest, when I looked at this and I had some questions when I first looked at it, it 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 looks like a very bureaucratic position when you read the grant and you read through all the pieces of it. And summing it down the way you did, I I like the way it looks much better with with what our goals are and how we're going to get there. What I don't like is grants to me are are they're sort of like short-term gain for long-term pain financially. You know, you you get on board with that. This grant is This grant is, um, comes with some, not just a person. It comes with some contract services and it comes with, uh, RHA. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be $100,000 a year when the grant goes away. Um, you know, in 10 years, we've got, we've got a million dollars invested in this thing. And then when I saw the 5%, somewhere to Bob, um, like, man, there's got to be a better way to do this. And the other piece is we're, we're, in, in my opinion, um, we're changing the process, which is easier to make the number go down when you change the process. But did we really solve anything? If we got ahead of the process, ahead of the problem and, uh, prevented the problem from ever existing. Then to me, that would be a better use of those types of funds. It, it appears to me that we're just changing how we're treating it to create a number. And I, I don't want to think that way, but that's just what it looks like. And I'm afraid that's what some of the public are going to think it looks like.
Sure. Well, I, I think I can address that just a little bit. I don't want to go too deep in a rabbit hole. But, you know, we statutorily, every county has a juvenile crime prevention commission, right? And it's called a crime prevention commission. And yet all it deals with generally is people, young people who have already been involved in the system. They're not really preventing crime. They're responding to crime. And the budget for that group prior to Raise the Age has been about, um, uh, I forget, I'm sorry. It's either 130,000 or 330,000, but we added another 100,000 under Raise the Age, um, expecting higher capacity. And so, um, we believe that with some of the changing systems at the end of the two years, that we really won't be in that position to continue these things. So for instance, there's a, a, a process here to create a mental health drop-off center that we hope will operate 24 hours a day in that two-year span, right? Just effective June 6th, we're going to, RHA is going to be able to provide services from 8 to 8 on Saturday and Sunday. And then ultimately go 24 hours. The reason they start their services Monday through Friday at 8:00 AM is every day that the school system is in place, they call and they ship some quantity of children from the school system to RHA for mental health issues. And so if they're able to have treatment 24 hours a day, then that, those youth won't show up early in the morning. They'll be spread out, those spread out across the weekend. And if they get more prompt treatment, then they won't be acting out and having the behavioral problems that are unfortunately treated as a crime now instead of a mental health issue. So in two years, conceptually, we won't need our youth counselor because that'll all be handled by RHA as part of the drop-off center on a more holistic 24-hours-a-day system. So our contract with RHA very specifically stops at the 24-month mark. That person goes back to being an RHA employee in that bigger umbrella and we won't be paying for that at all.
Other questions from council?
Uh, Jeff, uh, it, it appears to me that, uh, I like the concept of this program. But, but I was just looking at, at your, your slides. And I, and to me, I see we're somewhat fractured in the city in terms of response. Um, there was two items never mentioned. I think both, I, I believe comes in Parks and Rec. One is the Park and Play and the other one, uh, is Youth Solutions. I, I, I think that, and, and I may be, uh, maybe wrong here. But to me, it would be much more efficient if somehow that these services be linked together. We can have better supervision and I think we can get better results. And certainly we can get better reporting results in terms of what we've accomplished. So the council and the manager can determine, you know, if the programs are, are working, if what needs to, changes may need to be made to improve the efficiency of this. Instead of just having people out here, uh, working, going in different ways. Uh, when I think it would be much better under some kind of structure. Now, I, I'll, I'll mention that to Jeff. I'll also send that to, uh, to, to Harden and, and to, and to Rachel. In, in, in that whole concept there. Because, uh, there's got to be a, 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 a formula here where there's a, there's a structure put in place that one program can work with the other and provide strengths to, to accomplish what we're trying to, to get to at the end result.
Yes, sir. I think we completely agree with that. We expect to have a number of warm handshakes, uh, with Vanessa and the program and Youth Solutions. So Youth Solutions is really very clearly a prevention-based program. They're hosting, uh, leadership groups in a number of, uh, areas of, of the community. And so if any of the youth in those areas become involved with a petition, then we'll reintegrate them with that leadership group, provide a, a support structure of kids that are, uh, that are not in trouble. You know, uh, you know, my mom told me my friends define me and I think that's very true, right? So whoever you're hanging out with, if they're wandering and, and straying, then you're going to go with them, right? But if they're kids that are entertained in the park and play, so Park and Play is an activity-based program. So the kids aren't bored and then we bring them into the leadership groups through Youth Solutions. And that's all part of that wraparound system. So I completely agree that they should be integrated. And I think we expect to do that with the, uh, assessment of, of the available programs. And then the coordination person that manages where, where the youth are directed based on the, the assessments. So I think we're tracking.
Harden, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, we absolutely, we work hard to try to be integrated. And I think they, uh, the Youth Solutions and this, uh, as this grant program has been developed, they did include the Youth Solutions team in the conversations. Um, and that is the function, that was the intended function of our Youth Solutions program was to be the coordinator, uh, as you described here, or to be the coordinator. And, and try to understand where all the programs are. Um, I think as we have gotten started, it's, we're a little more focused in programming. Uh, than we are sort of the general coordination role. But I think you make a good point that there's a lot of success to be had if we can coordinate our programs to figure out how they're tied together.
Originally, that position was also the one that was to connect the dots among all of the different opportunities for kids. Because we're trying to put together a grid so that kids have some safety net. Figure out where they can be, where they can be successful. And it, it's going to take a lot of work to do that. I, I like particularly that this program is looking at that age group as well. And trying to, trying to change those numbers for, uh, black kids, Hispanic kids. Because I do think that there is implicit bias in a lot of what happens for kids being referred out. Um, and, and we have to tackle this in any way we can.
The questions from council?
So we, we, as we look at these grant programs, I think we have two or three, um, form positions coming off of grant now. Going on to, am I, am I right about that, Harden?
Can you say that again, please? I'm sorry.
Do we have, don't, don't we have some coming off of grant now that's now on payroll?
Uh, this year, and, and I get Peggy and Chief to help me with this. I think we do have folks that, that the grant concludes at the end of this fiscal year. Chief or Peggy, are you familiar? Is that three, is that three persons?
No, the set unit is actually funded, I believe, through October. So it, it runs just a bit into next fiscal year, uh, but it's a decreasing sliding grant, right? So, uh, we have a, an increased share each year and then this is the final year.
Gotcha.
We're only paying 25% of those positions this year. In, in the fiscal year 2021 budget.
So, you know, when, when, when these things come off of grant, they seem to kind of be just forgotten and rolled up into, to our normal operations. And that's ultimately, that's how you continue to grow. Or, uh, you know, a fellow told me a long time ago, uh, old, old mentor and colleague, he said, be sure you're growing and not swelling. Um, so that tends to make you think sometimes maybe they just get rolled up in there and you don't really know what the outcomes really were and is it, is it really necessary? What, I, I would not, I don't want to support this unless we've got a way to readdress it when the grant is over. If, if that's acceptable or if that's even an issue.
And Jim, to-
Very concerned, I'm very concerned about the, the budgetary side of it. And are we getting, uh, what we expect out of it? So how, how is that doable, Harden?
Jim, are you asking for just kind of a, a review to address it at the end of it or a specific-
I'm saying that, I'm saying that I would be willing to approve it for the grant period. And after that, it's not approved anymore. It has to come before it's just like a new position. Is that feasible?
Uh, I think certainly with the RHA contracts, that's very easy to do. It's a, it's a, you know, one-year contract with a one-year renewal and we'll evaluate at the end of that. The REI training programs, Chief, I mean, those are time-specific. And we know how many of those seats we're buying over two years. And that obviously can terminate at the end of the period. So I think the, the other major expenditure item in this is the staff person. Chief, do you want to talk through that? I guess we, we could approach a staff person and a recruitment and say, this is a two-year position. Uh, and it'll be evaluated at the end of the two years and, and you need to come here understanding it, your job may end in two years.
Yes, sir. That is exactly our expectation. That's our plan is to be very transparent with whoever, uh, we onboard and say, you've got a job for two years and 24 months and a day. The likelihood is you will not have a job moving forward. That's very clear to us and we'll be very transparent with anybody we hire.
And, and Chief, I think I heard you say in your presentation, you would look to our other partners. And there's a lot of folks that, that, you know, signed letters of support for the grant program, other agencies doing good work. Uh, you would look to them to pick up the mantle perhaps at month 25, if this was going to continue?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's a, a strategy within DJJ to incrementally increase court counselors. Uh, and each county's data is being studied under the Raise the Age formula. And so they've projected, I think, five new employees for DJJ, uh, across the next two or three years, whatever that is. So, you know, we're certainly hopeful that as their caseload comes down, as they better manage that workflow, that they'll be able to do a good bit of this work and we won't have to. We really feel like this grant is kind of a, a stopgap in the turmoil of Raise the Age. And once we, uh, envision good systems that is, Councilmember Owen says are connected and coordinated, um, then we'll be able to hand that off to these other partners once the dust is settled with, uh, Raise the Age.
Yeah, I got in the indication from your presentation, there was some level of capacity building or, and through this. But I was, was wondering if you could elaborate on some of the opportunities you see. You touched on a few there.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, just last year, we worked with Representative Ross to change the formula for teen court. And so there's a great, greater accessibility to teen court moving forward. Uh, so that's an exciting opportunity. That's a, an evidence-based program that has a high level of success around the nation. In North Carolina, it was capped and limited and, and not as successful as it could have been because of a legislative dictate like 10 years ago. But we've lifted that now. So we expect to see a dramatic improvement in outcomes because of the accessibility of the teen court program. And I think that's going to be similar to some of the other youth programs created. So as we've got a, a first-time influx of an additional $100,000 into the JCPC kind of sphere of programs, uh, we fully expect that those will be, uh, in place and better able to support, uh, these young people.
So, so Mr. Butler, to, to answer your question directly, I think that is, 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 believes we can make a program operate for 24 months. And be clear about that going in and set expectations of those who get involved with the program that this likely could terminate in 24 months. And obviously we have plenty of opportunities to bring updates back to city council and others in the community. Uh, and I hear Chief saying there may be others in the community that would be willing to pick up the mantle at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. If, if you guys could do that, I would feel a lot more comfortable with it. And, you know, then it would be if we, if for some reason we needed to keep it and absorb it as a staff position, we would just reassess it as if it was a new position at that time.
Well, we'd have the benefit of having some data to it. So instead of a brand-new, fresh program, we've got a two-year risk-free test drive of it. Uh, does this is truly effective for our community or is it still needed?
Yeah, and, and we've got regular reporting required under the grant. So, uh, as we do those regular reports to them, we can just, uh, carve and copy the council members. And then if you ever want a, a presentation on it where we, uh, bring it forward and, and public say, and we're happy to do that. But just the back-channel data might be enough for you to assess that, yeah, we're moving in the right direction. We're bringing that 472 number down incrementally by more than 5%. Uh, and then at the end, we're in a position to do those handoffs.
Chief, I would, I would like to see those numbers if they're growing, that 472. You said, if we could get some back history, I'm just curious how, how, how this is looking.
Yep. Is, is five years of data enough, sir? Or would you like me to go further back?
No, that's fine.
Okay, I'll get that for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yep.
And if I could add, again, we talk about reports and the regular reports. As, in, in our situation now with our economy, we're facing, uh, uh, obviously the investment in youth to, to, uh, can eliminate some issues going forward is, it's worth the investment. But I do think that we have to hold our people involved accountable in terms of at least getting, uh, providing accurate data of what programs they're offering, offering. And the known reports of what they're getting out of the time we're investing into those programs. Uh, often I think what happens in government, we start a program, it, it sounds good. And it, it goes out there and it gets a little bit independent. We're not sure, we, we keeping up with, with what is actually being accomplished. You know, Kathy mentioned about connecting dots. Uh, that's, that's certainly part of it. But I do believe, uh, we, we need a, 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 a reporting method or a, 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 a philosophy where we can, if asked, or we can see ourselves if we're making a difference in what we're trying to accomplish.
And I'm, I'm with you, council member. I think that's a big reason I'm encouraged by Harden's budget presentation yesterday and the inclusion of program and priority-based budgets is, that's really exactly what that is. So hopefully during our retreat and budget review process in coming years, we'll be able to specifically take a look at each individual program and the deliverables per the dollars spent. Uh, and compare them in a somewhat apples-to-apples manner rather than in the disparate way that we do now.
Yes, sir. And with respect to the programs that we'll be feeding, they're virtually all JCPC programs. And they have a very robust data reporting requirement already for their current operation. So they're capturing individual buckets of data for their successes. And we'll just be feeding them youth and we'll be able to disaggregate that and show you, uh, good outcomes, I believe.
Well, and I, I would ask that the same concept with the, uh, the Park and Play and Youth Solutions, that we, we need to get data, uh, from those two programs is, is, to me, all this plays together. So we, we can see again how effective we really are, are being. And, uh, and what we, what modifications we might have to make if indeed we're not reaching some goals we want to get to.
Perfect. Yes, sir.
I do have a question. Harden, did you have a clarifying point?
Uh, yeah. Mr., Mr. Owen, what, what, what do you think about the concept of just quarterly, uh, bringing a work session presentation to the council? It could be short if we don't have a lot to talk about. It could be a little longer if we do have more meat to share with the council.
Kind of like the CIP reporters?
Yes, a quarterly report on the, the Park and Play, the Youth Solutions, the Youth Diversion and roll that into one quarterly. That will force us as a staff to think about preparing for that, which then forces conversation among those different groups.
Well, I think that would be good. And, and again, I think the, the supervisory staff over these positions uh, has, has a responsibility of, of, of managing this to, to, to attempt to, us to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to have young people here, which is, which is, you know, is, is no easy thing, but it's absolutely essential. And it's a, it's a good investment if we can go in and keep kids on a, in a progressive manner. It's a great investment for, for not only the city, but for our society. But I think we, we have to have some accountability in terms of seeing what works and what doesn't work.
Yes, sir. Agree.
I do have a, a question. Chief, you talked about some of the entry points and some of the interactions with youth. And one of the things you talked about with, was ABSS. And so obviously within the school system, we have kids who may be at a city school who are not residents of the city. Uh, and I'm curious if you track or look at, um, how this may, um, positively serve students who are not residents of Burlington? And if any, uh, adjoining police departments are looking at a similar program?
Uh, last, last half of that first, to my knowledge, nobody's looking at, uh, uh, similar programs, at least not regionally, uh, associated with us. And candidly, I'm really unsure what the population of youth are that live in another county and go to school here. Um, so I'd have to do some research on that.
Okay. Not a, not a huge question, but I was just curious with, I know you're a, a great collaborator with our other departments, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, um, do I hear a motion to approve in a second for the funding of the youth diversion coordinator position? And budget amendment 2020 dash 30.
So moved. Could, could we clarify that that's got an expiration? It is going to expire at the end of two, two years. Would that be okay?
Sure.
I'll, uh, I'll approve, I will, uh, maybe we approve that motion with Mr. Butler's amendment to it.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Okay. So to clarify, the motion by council member Owen and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes is to approve the youth diversion coordinator position and approve budget amendment 2020 dash 30. And to add an expiration to the end of that with a review, uh, in two years. Any questions regarding that motion? All right, all those in favor, please indicate with an I and a hand raised. So say a I. All those opposed, motion is passed unanimously, uh, with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Butler, Ward and Owen. All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next we have a public hearing. Item two on our agenda, public hearing has been set to receive public comments and consider approving proposed amendments to the 2019, 2020 annual action plan and approve budget amendment 2020 dash 31 for its community development program and include the CDBG dash CV funds as a funding source. If anyone intended would like to speak during this public hearing, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. Or if you're joining us by phone, you can use the star nine, uh, to notify our host that you wish to speak. We'll recognize you at the appropriate time. If you're having technical difficulties, please contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440 to provide your comments to be read. At this time, I'd like to recognize Community Development Administrator Sonia Randolph to present this item. Welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you, here, council. In response to the coronavirus 2019 pandemic, the U.S. Department of Healthing and Urban Development notified the city of Burlington that we've received an allocation of $277,455 to be used to prevent, prepare for and respond to COVID-19. Um, this allocation was authorized by the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act on March 27th, 2020. And so this amendment is to be able to use the CDBG dash CB funds. And so what we are proposing here in planning and community development is to use the funds for public services and economic development initiatives as outlined in your agenda packets. So specifically, we are requesting that the $277,455,000 be split between public services grants in the amount of $216,632 and then micro enterprise business loans in the amount of $60,823. The city released a request for proposals for the CDBG dash CV grants to nonprofits and the public services category. And the following organizations applied. We had allied churches, City Gate Dream Center and the Women's Resource Center to apply for emergency assistance grants. For homeless operations, we had allied churches to apply. For mass distribution, we had Burlington Development Corporation and United Way to apply. For a summer youth program, we had City Gate Dream Center as well as Positive Attitude Youth Center. And then for food distribution, we also had Burlington Development Corporation in conjunction with Healthy Aliments and then Mills on Wheels to apply. And I do actually want to correct myself on those numbers on the breakdown. Um, for public services, I do apologize, that breakdown was $206,817,000. And then the breakdown for micro enterprise loans is $70,638,000. And then within the public services grants category, we did break that down further. Um, I, I believe that in previous conversations, um, you all had termed it safety net. Um, and then also the utility payment assistance. So at this time, I will take questions from council.
Any questions from council on that item?
So these, the, these organizations that applied, did, did they have specific dollar amounts that each requested? Am I missing that? Is it in here?
It should have been included in your packet that breakdown of the amounts that they applied for. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to fully fund all of the organizations, but we were able to give them, um, a percentage.
Doesn't everyone, everyone gets the same percentage of their original request, is that?
No, sir, not the same percentage. Uh, we did had to start from what they had actually, uh, what they had applied for. And then from there, we broke it down to the items that were actually eligible. So some of the breakdowns, um, specifically, I think there were three organizations in there within their budgets. They requested items that were not CDBG eligible under public services. So they weren't things that we were able to pay for. And so from there, we use that as a starting point. And then we broke it down even further to ensure that we kept it at the same percentages that had been presented to you all at a council work session, I believe, last month.
So just another side question, um, Harden, do we, do we know if there were any direct city expenses that would have been CDBG eligible, uh, for these monies?
You, are you asking about, uh, facility, uh, infrastructure projects?
Or, or any other true expenses that we had that would be eligible? Uh, obviously, the, the city is, is, we're going to have a, a budget shortfall, but we provided some services that during this crisis that we may or may not get reimbursed for depending on what happens to the money that was allocated by the state. Is there any of this money that could be used towards any of that?
Yeah, I think this one has a slightly, a slightly different intent, uh, as opposed to just reimbursing you for uh, things you weren't expecting related to the, the COVID-19, uh, virus. I think it's, it's, I think the intent, if you think generally kind of what CDBG is trying to, uh, provide some assistance. Obviously giving locals some input on that, uh, for folks with, folks with low to moderate income, uh, that as, as, as the HUD definition of low to moderate income.
Sure.
Sonia and I think Nolan can join in as well. Nolan helped, uh, put together this, uh, funding distribution sheet. Uh, Sonia and Nolan, do you want to comment or add to that? I know we also inquired about infrastructure projects and we're specifically told that was not eligible.
Yeah, I would be more concerned about direct expenses relating to any of these types of items that we incurred that we may not totally know about. So if it's not, it's not, I understand completely.
Nolan, you want to share any of your research?
Well, I mean, I, I think one of the things that the utility payment assistance.
Nolan, you're pretty quiet on my screen. I don't know if.
Can you guys hear me?
Still pretty quiet.
Is that any better?
Little bit.
Tiny bit. We can hear you, it's just quiet, everyone can crank up the volume.
Payment assistance was, you know, geared at trying to, you know, we're going to have some folks that are going to struggle with some utility payments to the cities. Some of that helps to redirect that back to something, you know, that help us to recapture a potential loss there. Um, you know, we did look at items in our capital requests this year. Um, but that's what we're really looking more towards what you'll see coming later with the fiscal year 21 CDBG requests. Um, there's some things in there, we're trying to, uh, direct some of those funds to with, uh, some of the needs.
Okay.
So just to piggyback on what Nolan was saying is that, so these funds are, again, these are not our regular CDBG funds. These have to be used for a specific purpose. And so even though it's used to prevent, to prepare for or respond to the coronavirus, it still must meet the other, uh, requirements under CDBG that, uh, city manager, um, had, uh, Mr. Watkins had mentioned earlier in terms of making sure that the funds are dedicated to low to moderate income individuals or areas. So, um, but again, these are separate. And so this is an amendment just to add these funds as a funding source to our 1920 annual action plan, which is kind of like the seat, the community development budget. So, um, in a later time, we will talk about again, with some of the more public facilities and infrastructure projects that we can do under our regular CDBG funds.
Other questions from council? All right, this is officially a public hearing. So hearing no other council questions, uh, at this time, we'll open our public hearing to allow comments. Uh, we will ask that if any comments are made, we ask that folks state their name and address for the record. So at this point, I'm going to turn to our host and John Vernon and give them a moment to let us know if we have anyone coming through on the lines. So again, the public hearing for item two, the annual action plan is currently open. All right, it does look like we have a question. Looks like Heidi Norwick is asking to speak.
Yes, good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
We can, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Heidi Norwick and I live at 2026 Gurnee Court in Burlington. And, um, I know many of you, I am the president of United Way and we are one of the applicants. And we are, um, uh, applying for mask distribution. We've been working with some city staff and, um, working specifically, uh, Peter Bishop and Rachel Kelly. And we are identifying local manufacturers in Burlington that are producing masks and hope to, um, distribute those in the city limits, primarily in the 27217, um, zip code area. And, um, for where we have seen the highest incidence of COVID as reported by the, uh, county health department records. So, um, we appreciate the cities working with us to help get those masks out to the community for people that may not have access to get masks on their own through their employer or be able to afford them. So we appreciate your looking into that grant and possibly funding it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the public hearing for this item is still open. So we're asking if anyone else would like to speak on this. Again, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you're joining us via phone. Give folks just one more moment. Looks like, uh, we have no further comments on this. Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to close public hearing by council member Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any further questions from council? Do I hear a motion from council to approve the amendments to the 2019, 2020 annual action plan and approve budget amendment 2020 dash 31?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the 2019 to 2020 annual action plan and approve budget amendment 2020 dash 31 made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Thank you, Sonia, we appreciate your work on this and we appreciate our, our federal partners for making this money available. I was very welcome surprise. All right. That concludes item two on our window, that was our public hearing. Next, uh, is our new business item. This is item number three. Mayor Pro Tem Hikes has been recused from this item. Uh, she will remain on the line, but will not be voting on this. City council will consider temporarily closing Main Street from Davis Street to Front Street during the following days and times and consider extending the premises of Burlington Beer Works onto Main Street to accommodate additional outdoor dining and service of the beer and wine in a designated area. The petitioner requests this multi-date temporary street closure to begin, uh, upon city council through the end of phase two, North Carolina Executive Order 141. The dates and times are listed in the agenda, uh, but include Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Okay, at this time, we will recognize Emily Crowley, where Recreation Supervisor for Special Events.
Thank you, mayor and city council for having me on the Zoom call this evening. Um, you heard from Peter Bishop earlier about some of the conversations being had with local restaurants. And out of those conversations came a street closure request from Burlington Beer Works. Um, we utilized the special event permit process because that's how we close streets in downtown Burlington. So all of the proper paperwork was handled. Um, y'all have a map in your packets this evening that show the street closure. Um, and we've also gotten support from the police department and the fire department after a couple of discussions um, of how logistically that would work. Um, and Tracy Schmidt, our, the general manager of Burlington Beer Works is on the call this evening to tell you a little bit more about the application. And then we'd both be happy to answer any questions you have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Um, thank you for taking the time to have this discussion with me this evening. Um, I have requested to expand our outdoor seating, um, because being at 50% capacity, um, still has, you know, limited us. Um, we took a major hit over the past couple of months. Um, we're down about 70% in volume. And it's, you know, to see the response from the public when we were able to open our patio, um, our volume immediately jumped 52%. Um, in the, the first Friday, we were open and then 147% on this past Friday. Every, everyone wants to sit outside and I unfortunately had to turn guests away because every outdoor seat, um, was full. I did request, um, Main Street from initially the lab pool lot to Front Street because it's visible, um, from our windows. It, it provides me a level of confidence in being able to monitor our guest and our situation, um, that we have.
All right. Any questions from council?
Mayor, if I could, if, if I could ask Peggy and David, uh, in reference to insurance requirements, uh, are we being added as an additional insurie by, um, by Burlington Beer Works or what's the process we're going through with this?
We will need to ask them to do that.
That is part of the application process.
That is part of the application process. It does the city of Burlington be made of an additional insured for this. Yes.
Just all the standard requirements we normally have, isn't that correct?
Nothing, nothing outstandingly different, but.
Yeah, the other question I got in terms of the actual blocking of the streets is I read this. It appears that that's going to be privately done. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the and we'll obviously at at Main and Front, excuse me, Main and yeah, and Davis. But what are we going to do? Are we doing? And maybe I'm missing this. I'm trying to read through this now. Are we going to take any precautions there at Main and Front? In case some person gets some and try to turn down Main Street?
Um, yes, I do plan on having a vertical barricade, whether it's a car in addition to our stanchions. I know Emily has spoken with the police and fire department about that request.
Further. Regarding the one-way street and traffic already used to traveling and being able to increase velocity coming down Main Street, passing over Davis and entering the barricaded area. Cars are not able to access Main Street the same way from Front Street. And so the barricade was seen as being efficient in that location.
Because somebody would be turning the wrong way on the Main Street. So there's a already unlikely and then should be a lower speed. And then we're adding a three-way stop sign there per our agenda. So. I did have a question. I know we had had high hopes for access for Lab Core's parking lot behind there. Do we have an update on there? Was that unable to to happen?
Um, as of eight o'clock tonight, I still haven't heard back from Lab Core. I did reach out to both Gary Aharon and Mark Garowitz to follow up on that. And neither Sharon Dent or Board President or myself have gotten a response yet.
That is unfortunate. We appreciate their support for downtown revitalization activity. I know that parking lot represented probably the best opportunity for safe downtown dining for your establishment and others. So hopefully that does come through eventually, but recognize that this is a a good stopgap. Go ahead, David.
Along those same lines, I'm assuming there's going to be some sort of barricade put up coming out of the Lab Core parking lot onto Main Street to keep someone from coming through their parking lot and into your closed street.
Yes, I've already spoken with Dean Cobal and our streets division about what the needs would be should this be approved.
I assume you spoke with our downtown resident on that street.
I'm sorry.
The Wilkins family that lives on the street will have parking access through these these barricades.
Emily, I'm going to defer to you.
I'm not sure that's been discussed yet, but we are able to park cars within the barricades. So that would just have to be coordinated with those folks. There just means look through traffic whatsoever.
I agree with the mayor. We need to reach out to the Wilkins family and make sure.
I know it. I know they only represents two vehicles and you have close contact with them already. Just want to make sure we cover that basis.
Will do.
Any other council questions regarding this request?
No, just two comments. One is I'm thrilled that business has bounced back for you guys. That's been a burden on my mind and my heart for all the businesses that throughout our city and state and country, for that matter, that have been shut down trying to get restarted. And you know, in Lab Core's defense, they've been on the front lines of this thing. I'm sure they're pulled in twenty different ways. And I know as they try to go into reopening through whatever phase they're doing internally, they're they're, I'm sure they're looking at cubicles being moved to 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 have six-foot spaces or plexiglass going up or all the things that they've got to do to run their business. So I wouldn't read too much into the fact that they've been a little slow in responding. I'm sure they've been a little sideways themselves trying to get their business going. I'm just glad that everybody was able to come together and look at alternatives to make this happen. I'm happy for you guys.
Yes, he did give me his blessing. He did say that he was fine with the street closure as long as Lab Core was closed. The one amendment that I would like to make is that it it will be unnecessary, given the trend of business on Tuesday and Wednesday for that closure. So it would be amended to Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you for noting that. Any other council questions? All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the request to temporarily do the street closing closures? And as mentioned, that request has been modified to Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
I'd make a motion to approve the modified request.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Thanks, Harold. All right, motion is to approve by council member Butler and seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. Any opposed? Motion has been passed by myself and council members Ward Butler and Owen. As previously mentioned, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes was recused from this item. She will return to the meeting at this point. Tracy, Emily, thank you so much for your work and we're glad to hear your businesses bouncing back and we continue to help our downtown pull through this.
Thank you so much.
All right, that completes our regular agenda. We do have a public comment period as per our regular meetings. And as per the last couple of meetings, this has been modified slightly to allow folks multiple ways to include their public comments in our meeting. So public comments may be emailed to publiccomments@burlingtonnc.gov. We were accepting those until five PM on today, Tuesday, June second. Comments can also be made during the meeting by joining the Zoom meeting link, which is included on the city website or by dialing in by phone to the phone number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID eight two six six zero five one four seven six one. Callers, you can press star nine to be prompted to join our public comment period. Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature. Looks like we do have one public comment already indicated. So again, if anyone has any questions, you can contact John Vernon and find his gun. John Vernon's contact is three three six five one three five four four zero. John can assist you with any technical difficulties that you might be having to issue your public comment. I will remind folks that please, when they join, state your name and address. So at this time, we have Reverend Donna Van Hook. Donna, are you with us?
I am. Good evening.
Welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Donna Van Hook. My address is three one seven Caswell Street, Burlington, North Carolina, two seven two one seven.
Very good. All right.
Okay, good evening again. My public comment this evening is about police accountability and meetings that I have been requesting for some time about a plan that was submitted to city manager Harden Watkins on December the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. I, along with two colleagues of mine, met with the chief of police and also the city manager. We worked to collectively to address the advisory board for the police department in Burlington. My colleagues and I were asked to submit some information to city manager Harden Watkins, saying we did so on January the third. We asked for an update on what we submitted on January thirteenth within a timeframe that we had all agreed upon. And we were promised at least an initial meeting with city council members. And that would be according to a way that we agreed upon, that two members could meet with community members. We did submit some names that would be available to be a part of that community input. So I sent a request on the thirteenth to Mr. Watkins and to receive a reply. And I also sent an online form to request a meeting with the mayor and the mayor pro tem to which I will schedule a meeting with the city manager Harden Watkins. We did talk on January the fifteenth. I was not given a satisfactory response concerning meetings with the city council because that did not occur. And that was concerning the oversight of Burlington Police Department. My colleagues and I have since met with Mr. Harden Watkins a few more times, trying to iron that part out and another issue that I had. We have not received satisfactory reply to our request about the oversight of the police department. I have also made other requests to meet with both the mayor about Tootes and Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hites, which I have not received to this date. But I did receive an email from Mayor Pro Tem. As I recall, it said she sent my request to the mayor. I don't know exactly what that was concerning because I have not had any communication with her in months. So at this point, I am requesting again during this public comment, a meeting with both the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem so that we can get underway talks about community oversight for the Burlington Police Department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll note that all in-person meetings have been suspended indefinitely. Hence why we're all here on Zoom. I'll ask, are you amenable to a virtual Zoom meeting?
At this point, as far as with you and Mayor Pro Tem, I will I will agree to that.
Okay, all right. Then I'm going to ask Harden, manager Harden Watkins, to go ahead and work on with staff to set something up for that. All right.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Harden, if you would, if you would, I'd like to get minutes of that meeting.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure those get shared out with the rest of council.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, we have our next public comment. We have Barbara Enick Day. Barbara, are you with the with us?
Uh, I am.
Very good. If you could just state your name and address for the public record.
Barbara Enick Day, eight zero nine Ray Street, Burlington, North Carolina, two seven two one seven. And good evening, council, city council. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm just going to make a few comments, compliments. First of all, I like to compliment council member Butler on the beautiful invocation prayer.
Thank you.
Second, I would like to thank mayor, city manager and the chief of police for showing up at the rally at North Park on this past Sunday. It was very moving and it was peaceful. And the third thing I would like to think is the Burlington Police Department and Chief Smythe and the detectives for the quick police work. The two arrests that was made for the murder of Warren Frederick Mabin, which it was my church member. And I attended his service today. It was a beautiful service. But what stuck with me was his brother Forrest. When they closed the casket, he said, this was the only sibling I knew. And we are not even supposed to be here. So I'm going to leave you with that. And one other thing that I would like to make an official request that was made by Phaedra Blackwell, owner of Blackwell Funeral Home at that rally on Sunday evening. And I think this has maybe come to the council before. Not since, not while I'd been back as a resident here in my hometown Burlington. Phaedra Blackwell made a request that we make Rowhead Street Juan Luther King Junior street or road or highway. And I I would like to officially request that tonight and see where we can go with this. Because I think that is long overdue. Most of all, this area, and I live along the corner. The back of my house is Rowhead Street. And I was a part of the nineteen sixty-nine riots. And like I said, and I'll say it again before the council, as I told the youth there at North Park, we feel right in this town. We've got, we we gonna, we gonna build up. We want to build up. So I'm putting that request in. And again, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate those those shout outs and thank you for that request. And I will note regarding the request for MLK Boulevard, that was a conversation that came up at the Sunday rally. I know Harden and the chief made some contacts there. And I believe we expect some further conversations with community leaders, including Mr. Blackwell as they work with property owners, business owners and other leaders along that street and in the community. So I know that's something former Mayor Pro Tem Fawcett had brought up previously with the council. So I expect that we'll have some further conversations down the road on that. All right, looks like we have no additional public comment requests via email, phone or Zoom. So we are going to conclude our public comment session. At this time, we'll move on to council. Any council comments?
I have two, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. One is I want to really thank city staff and everybody that was involved in working with our restaurants and all the things necessary to go into phase two. Obviously, that's an important piece and I think we'll probably be pulled on again as we go into phase three. So you know, everyone's done a great job and they're to be commended for that. The second item I want to mention, and I had shared some comments with Harden today. We obviously have a action item coming up concerning the affordable housing study that was given last night. And you know, that's a pretty lengthy ninety-eight hundred page document, whatever it was. I spent about four and a half hours reviewing that. And I'll have to be just completely honest with my colleagues and and everyone else. I've been a part of a lot of studies. I've been a part of a lot of consultants doing various things. I don't think I've ever read one with more erroneous statements or assumptions within it. And I shared some of those last night. At best, it was a poor choice of words. At worst, it was inefficient work that that we pay taxpayer money for. And I could go on. I've got multiple pages of items and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to labor that. I've shared most of those with Harden. There are some good points to it. There are some things that are very valid. I do want to make one point of reference that I did not make last night, but there is a, there is a institute called the Federal Financial Institute Examination Council. And they don't even show elements counties being distressed. Caswell is. I think it's our closest. But you know, there was some, there was some inconsistencies with our public transit service noted. But there was no mention of ACTA. I'm not even sure they understood ACTA even existed and or part, which which is an important piece. We obviously have some pretty strong code enforcement initiatives that are still evolving and taking place. I don't know that that received enough credit within the document itself. Our UDO is evolving. Obviously, we're doing updates in our UDO, but it's new in and of itself. So as I mentioned last night. And then there were some comments about economic development in downtown and you know, gosh, we've we've we're involved in several initiatives. we're involved in several initiatives downtown, but I'm not even sure they were aware of or I'm not even sure they've visited. Maybe, maybe they did, maybe not. But any data that shows a margin of error between 18 and $23,000 should not be trusted. I understand that that may be the only data out there, but I guess my point is years ago, I got involved in the public transportation discussion and I was not an advocate, but I became a student. And, and I championed that cause and we did it over time. We did it with good data. We, we built some understanding of it and it evolved into what we have today called Link Transit. I'm very proud of that. I think affordable housing is a very similar analogy in that not everybody understands the need for public transit. If you've got a car, you can get around. Not everybody understands the need for affordable housing. If you have a house, you have a place to stay or you're not financially impaired, burdened, overburdened with rent. So my point is it takes a deep understanding of what the needs really are. And it's important to me and I hope others too, that the, the needs that are identified are very factual. And they're, as you state, your body of work in there, what you're trying to accomplish. It's doable, that the impediments are real. And that the action items are legal, that, that we have preemptive authority to do those. And I would question both in this particular study. I'd love to hear our attorney, city attorney, Mr. Huffman, share some thoughts at some point in the future on those action items. But my point is, as we look at this to create our five-year plan, I don't know what we've done in the past. I've never seen a study like this. So maybe our five-year plan has been internal. Maybe we've done it internally. Maybe we've, we've had consultants do studies for us in the past on this. But I don't think we ought to rely on this at all. At best, if Mike and Sonya and Nolan can go through it and pull out the things to create our own plan. But I certainly don't want to release one with, with this many questions as a, as a working plan of action for what we want to do. And I'll, I'll leave the, the rest up to Harden. I think Harden indicated that he didn't even have time to get through it completely. And is there, there's just some further review to be done on it. But my point is, I, I think this in and of itself is useless. We, we need to use what we can out of it. We bought it, we own it. Let's use what we can out of it and create one that is more understanding of what our market really is. And let's see what we need to do to, to move in that direction without creating a sort of a false narrative in some regards. So just wanted to make those comments.
Thanks, Jim. Other council comments?
I would just add that the, I, I do believe that through the numerous reports we've got from mental housing, the, the progress that that organization has made internally is, has been substantial.
Absolutely.
And I believe that we've got good leadership in that area. We, we, I think we have an understanding, the staff has an understanding of trying to work with citizens on their homes to improve the quality of life. And in reference to some of these properties, they've identified some ownership problems and working through the process there. So I, I, I think that no matter what goes forward, I, I want to thank that group of people and who I think have made significant strides over the past, over the past years.
I just want something not, not really to rebut what Jim says, but I, I don't think we need to completely condemn this report because I think that there were certainly any number of things that showed areas that we could certainly improve upon. You're, I think you're suggesting last night about talking with bankers locally and, and how they make their decisions about loans. That's, that's a very good thing that we should be doing. Helping people prepare for purchasing their own homes. Having the education in order to do that. I think that the, the idea of this, I think, is that fair housing for people is important to our community. I'm, I'm not sure. I'd really like to see where you saw the errors and actually go through it with me. I would appreciate if we could do that.
Be glad to. Matter of fact, I'll send slides to validate it so everybody has it. I've already done it. And more importantly, you know, a study should be comprehensive. It should not make errant assumptions and certainly the factual data that's in there should, should state such. So I'm just saying as a report to document our plan. I don't want to use this at all, but there are, there are positive things in there. There are good things in there. There are, there is data in there in and of itself that we can extrapolate and use. So I don't, I'm not saying that the plan in its entirety is condemnable. But what I am saying is, as it is written, it has too many assumptions that I believe, I personally believe are not, they're not with, they're without merit. And certainly a lot of the statistics or the commentary in there lead you to believe that things are much more dire than they are. And, and that's the piece that concerns me. And but you know, I think staff can pull this together and take some of the points out of it, clean it up. Pair it down to what is most pertinent and then we can figure out a way forward from there. I just don't want to see this document be our working plan.
And back to, back to Kathy's point, in the past, I, I know in the previous management of this program, our staff has worked with individuals who are trying to, to apply and qualify for loans in terms of helping them understand what was going to be required and working with private banking. I hope we can continue to do that. And hopefully we can continue to, to extend our partnership with some local banks that would have an interest in, and being an active partner in working with people who are trying to buy their first home or make improvements to the existing property they now have. I agree with you on that, Kathy. That's, that's important.
Well, the other thing is that there are an awful lot of people who would disagree with, with Jim's point that it's not as dire. I, I tell you truly, there are lots and lots of housing situations in our community that are in fact dire.
I don't disagree that there are some. I'm just saying that, that some of the, some of the statements in here that our poverty rate has doubled. That's absolutely not true. That makes it seem dire. It's not true. I'm just saying, let's stick to what's true. Let's stick to the census tracts that are true. Let's stick to the data that is true. And let's use that as the basis for what we're trying to accomplish. That's what I'm saying.
Other council comments? Obviously, we'll, we'll have some further discussion on that. And I think Eric and Spencer mentioned they'll continue to be in the community. So hopefully we can make sure we get our dollars worth out of that report. Or at least effectively pull some pieces out of it. I do want to follow up on the request I made to council regarding the June 6th. Every Town for Gun Safety request. John Vernon did provide all our council members and staff with background on the agency supporting that event. And I want to see if council members had any questions or further thoughts about the idea to light City Hall orange in recognition of promoting gun safety and reduction in gun violence in our community.
But Mayor, I, I have, I have a statement I'd like to make. I mean, anyway you come at it. I think if we take a position, I'm talking about the city council, that may be some form of lobbying. And absent some clear legal guidelines, I, I don't know that we as a city council ought to be taking part in that. That just my take and I'm not making a comment either pro or con. I'm just saying that over the years, at least we have, we've had certain restrictions even on bond issues about what we would really like to see occur, but we have limitations. And I'm just not so sure that we'd want to do this and set a precedent. And I'm not commenting on whether it's good or bad. I think we all have our feelings about gun safety. I personally am for gun safety, but as far as this body taking that position, I would be, I'd be extremely reluctant, you know, to weigh in on it or vote to do that. That's my two cents.
I agree.
Other council comments or questions on this?
No, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of gun safety. The, the only question that I want to raise is that I brought up doing something about Mental Health Month and it was a different color. And there was a lot of pushback on that. So I dropped it. So, and I, I do see that we could be asking every week to have some color on City Hall. And, and I mean, that's just such a small point as part of this, but the philosophy of the three groups is very much in my wheelhouse. Very much for gun safety.
Yeah, I appreciate John and pulling that information together. I think to Jim's concerns earlier, the fact that just making sure that we're not wading into sticky Second Amendment territory was reassuring to see that groups focus on violence reduction, local control, and in some cases do defend the Second Amendment. So I don't see it as controversial. I think we've seen some good activities around the county with things like reduction in child abuse and lighting the county courthouse blue. I think it's common precedent for governments and agencies to, to use mediums like the fact that we now have City Hall lights and it's a relatively low cost adjustment to, to change those periodically to help bring public awareness to things that we're attempting to, to address. So I would like to see us change the colors up periodically, whether it's for mental health or child abuse or gun safety. I recognize this request was made at short notice and I, I will support if council does not want to take this action at this time. But I would like us to continue to keep the door open for other lighting requests.
Well, with that being said, Mayor, I, I, I'm not trying to give the staff. I know their, their, their cupboard is full now, but I think we would need to have a policy. A process be brought forth for the council to, to agree upon. So it'd be in the public that, that been understanding of what kind of request would be, could be made and also how it would be judged. Still just kind of taking it haphazardly. There's a lot of good opportunities out there and we certainly would, would, you know, I think could utilize some of these. But I, I believe you got to have a process because if you say yes to one and no to another, there's got to be some reasoning there.
I will note, staff actually did put together a process. It's already existing. It's primarily geared towards outside requests. We recognize that if we open the floodgates to outside requests, we could be asked to change the color literally every day or week. And so staff went ahead and put together a procedure for approvals on that. But we don't have a request for an internal council request. Obviously, we being the approving board there, my thought was that could be housed within this council discussion process and we can evaluate those on a case by case basis. But if you feel go ahead, Harden.
I'll ask Scott to add Rachel, if he will, Scott's our host. Rachel put together that policy if she wants to share. She may, may be the most fresh in her mind.
I wish it was a little more fresh in my mind, but we did discuss that not long after our 125th year. And yes, it was certainly a process designed with the fact that we would have out, outside groups come toward us and, and maybe request this from time to time. And we wanted to make sure we had some control over that. I again, haven't refreshed myself in quite some time, but I believe we had a only one color change a month situation because it would take a little bit of work on building maintenance staff to get that done. And there's some costs with the, the colors, very minimal. But just trying to recognize the first come, first served to pick which month, once a month, where some of the outlines we had presented after the 125th year was through.
Thank you, Rachel. Other council comments? I would like for us to explore colors and maybe if we're not getting applications, encourage the community to submit those. So since our 125th anniversary was approximately three years ago. So we've, it's been blue and gold, which are not bad colors. As a former Cub Scout and also a fan of Burlington for a while. All right. Any other council comments? Harden, any comments?
No, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion? Actually, I will make one other comment. REI, Racial Equity Institute did come up in a, a number of the speakers today. And I do want to remind folks that that's been an ongoing program in our community, open to the general public to participate, sponsored locally and facilitated through the area. That's the elements, Racial Equity Alliance. They do great work for helping educate people on racial bias training. And so great program currently on hiatus because of coronavirus. And so highly encourage folks to check that out when things resume. And I have been reminded that we have one final presentation from staff and that is from Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun. Mike, are you with us? There we go.
And I won't keep you long, Mayor and Council. I appreciate just a couple of seconds. We did want to introduce you. We had a, a recent promotion of Conrad Ometo. He's been our principal planner for current planning. He's taken care of the, some of the issues you talked earlier tonight. He was heavily involved in the outdoor dining, handles our technical review committee, has been heavily involved in our U D O implementation. Conrad applied for and did receive the planning manager position for the department. The planning manager will oversee long and short range planning, zoning and code enforcement. And he and I will be working together starting June 15th on that. I just want to take a second to let you see his face. You've probably seen his name on some things. Conrad is, of course, has an undergraduate degree, but he also has two master's degree. One of those in public administration and one of those in urban and regional planning. So we're building our depth in that department for the planning department. We're glad he's on board. He's had experiences in California. His most recent experience for about six years was in Colorado Springs, Colorado. So he has lots of concepts and experiences from other sized cities across the nation. He's moved here to Burlington and fit in very well. And we're just pleased to have you. I wanted to have a chance to just say hello to you real quick.
Very good.
Howdy.
Welcome.
Good to meet, good to see you all. Looking forward to working with everyone. Appreciate it.
Very good. And for those of you who may not know, Conrad is a downtown resident. So he's over right into our community by living at Maho's Reloades. So.
Conrad, I've heard wonderful things from Nolan and Mike about you that has no pressure whatsoever on you. You realize
All right.
Okay.
Let's keep, keep it rolling.
We're expecting big things, in other words.
All right, big plans.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Conrad? Otherwise, congratulations from the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any further comments or questions from council? Appreciate your patience in this long meeting tonight. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Motion, Councilmember Ward to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. All right. Council is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe evening.
Thanks, good night. Good night, everybody be safe.
Yeah, thank you all. We'll, we'll see you soon by Zoom.